Okay, evening everyone. We'll get moving here. One announcement that kind of relates to Fire Company is fireworks. Unless the owner of Legion was lying to me this morning, we'll be firing the works off of a pontoon boat. So he'll be contacting the Commodore for the boat club. And I'm sure you guys, I'm not sure about how boats work or whatever with sheriffs, but what they have to do actually. But we went over all the sites Friday and everyone's kind of problematic. So somehow he pulled it off.
He'll be in touch with us.
What's that?
He'll be in touch with us.
I guess so. I asked him what he needed.
He said he didn't need Fire Company.
He said he didn't, but I don't know how that works, how he works with the Coast Guard on the road.
Yeah, I know he's got to have clearance, you know, so far everything has to be kept so far back. So, I mean probably sheriffs will do it, but we'll be a couple of guys from the boat case.
Yeah. So this is that one there. And tomorrow I'll probably find out it's not true and track down. Okay, so last Tuesday we talked briefly and continued discussion on the roof and the AC units. And I think they're, you know, they're part of a bigger picture obviously, you know, coming into the building which the village owns. So I thought it was important to like, you know, just go over a little bit of our budgeting practices and where we're at. Because I don't want decisions that we make, I don't want you feel like that somehow we're, you know, singling you out or whatever. I mean during a budget process, you know, we have all the departments that are, you know, applying for different things. So, you know, I just wanted to go over that. So maybe, you know, we got a better understanding of that. And I'm sure most of you, everyone knows, but I'd like to still go over that. You know, let's see, I just brought down some notes. You know, if you follow our budget process, you know, we're constrained by the New York State, the tax gap. And so every year, you know, we have to create a little magic and fit everything into a small budget, you know. And every year, and that includes personnel, sewer and water, highway, maintenance, garage, garbage pickup, liability insurance, police, workers comp, fire protection, and more. And each year, all these departments are supposed to sit down. We try to gather as much information we can and get the requests from each of the departments. They can sit down with the accountant. And it's kind of a wish list at that point. This is what we need. And then we have to somehow kind of fit that all in the budget. Last year, you know, excluding the Main Tree project, our budget was about $2 million. And municipalities like ours, you know, have a fund balance, which you guys also have, a rainy day savings so to speak. And the recommended amount in that is around 20%. So last year during the budget discussions, we went over the roof and how to pay for the roof. Because obviously that's a big ticket item. And how to fit that in the budget. And there's no way you're going to fit it in the budget unless you take it out of the fund balance, or, you know, take out a bond, or bond for it, or whatever. So, you know, we had a lot of discussion here. We discussed how to do that, how to pay for that, or whatever. My recommendation was taking it out of the fund balance. And, you know, we had a discussion and some weren't that comfortable because it was going to take us down to like 18%. But we voted on it, agreed on it. And so $75,000 is taken out, it's set aside, it's budgeted for the roof. My apologies for not moving that head quicker, but it, you know, we're kind of overwhelmed here, I have to tell you the truth. And again, it's not personal. We haven't gotten to it. Steve, they finally got some of the information to me, you know, we had to get a few things down. So we can get the RFP out soon, as soon as we, you know, you write up the specs for it, which shouldn't be too hard. But, so that's where we're at with that. During the budget process, we asked the Fire Company for their actuals a number of times during it. And you guys had a problem with that. Said you'd never done it before. So, you know, so we moved ahead with that. So, but to understand where you guys are at, and which we have to do from ours, you know, from, it's our responsibility, you know, you guys submit a 990 form every year because you're a non-for-profit. And we went to the website and got that information. So, you know, in 2015, the 990 shows that you guys have $850,000 and $853,549 in available cash and savings. Every year you've increased your savings. From 2012 to 13, you increase it $54,000. 13 to 14, $5,480. And 2014 to 15, $50,287. So also from the 990, it looks like your year's functional expenses were $147,000, $147,283. Sorry, let me start that again. And so a fund balance for you guys would be, you know, if it was like we have to, would be somewhere around $30,000. And so, you know, obviously $853,000 seems a bit excessive. You know, I know taking, we have to take into consideration a big ticket item for you that you have to replace would be, and I'm sure you say for the trucks, and replacements for the trucks. I'm not sure what that number is, or if you can take loans out, or how you usually pay for them.
Not good.
What's that?
No.
Okay. So, you know, all this to say, this year, you know, we can't approve the temporary AC units for two months. We don't have it in our budget. It's like, our fiscal year started in June, and if it was towards the end of the year, you could move monies around or whatever. We don't know where we're going with anything right now. So we don't have that money right now. I can't find it in there. I can't find money for other items that I'm trying to find and buy, you know, or purchase. We can't, you know, we hired another guy temporary. We could only hire him for a few days because of the budget. So, you know, that's where we're at with the AC, you know, with the AC units. In the next budget, you also talked about some big items, which is probably the boiler. And I think we have to address the floor in there. Those are issues that I think we're responsible for. And so in the upcoming year, you know, we can, you know, we can discuss that and find monies for that and see how we can, you know, what we can do with that. Also the cost of the, you know, the permanent units versus the temporary units, you know, I don't know, I'm not familiar with the exact price on there. But I think for the amount we're going to pay for temporary units, that's a big chunk, you know, you could be putting towards permanent units. So that's kind of my spiel and where we're at. And just so you guys know where we are at financially, how we work with our budget, you know, what you guys have, and, you know, I'm not sure why you guys, you know, can't dip into some of your funds for a program that you're setting up at this point.
No, it was good. So I'll start with, if you don't mind, I'll start with the money that we have and then why we increase it. So the money that's going in, the increase in the savings is what we call the truck fund. So the money that we have will go into obviously the truck fund, which is where the $853,549 number you have in 2015.
But just a second, that's broken down though. There's $100,000 that you have available that's not savings. And then you have 700 plus, it's for, I would imagine, your truck fund.
Yeah, so it's for the truck fund.
But there's another $100,000 that's also in non-interest bearing, a non-interest bearing account.
Yeah, okay. So the truck fund money, that will, and then you can come with this because you're also the out brass. The bid for a truck would be anywhere between $600,000 to $1 million. So that fits right in between that range, just so you know. As you know, or probably don't know, how this works, the trucks are paid for by the company. There's no bond floated. The taxpayers don't pay them. So I know it sounds like a lot, this actually will be depleted. And most likely depleted to the point where it might not be zeroed out, but it will be depleted at $600,000 and then $200 comes off. So the trucks have to be replaced. So when that gets up to another $800,000, again, it gets dropped back down to like $200,000 so we can replace the trucks. Currently, the next replacement will be in two years. So that will eventually go back down to $200,000. So I know it looks like a great idea, I'm glad everyone did their homework on it, but it's going to be gone. And that's where we're at again. And then I know there's still some finagle room, but it takes us so long to get back to that point. At saving even $50,000 a year, we are required to replace the engine after a certain point in terms of NFPA. So then we get to that point again, and it drops back down. But we, and we're well aware, we know we also filed a 990. I mean, you could have easily looked it up a long time ago, but instead, I don't know.
Well, we just asked you for the information.
Yeah, I know. And that's why I was like, well, I could assume you knew that, with the 990, I just didn't know we didn't have it. The AC units, is there any way next year to put those in instead of doing the boiler and the floor, or?
I think our main concern would be the boiler and the floor.
The floor's still there, and I could probably hold out on the floor, I think.
Well, boiler is a necessity to, excuse me, I'm chewing a candy here. It's a necessity to keep the building open, you have that heat. Air conditioning is not. So if the boiler, if we're concerned about the boiler going.
When it is a shelter, it is going to be, AC is going to be a necessity in that.
One of the problems we have with not having the air conditioning, I'd have to look up, I can't recall the code of it, but once they eliminated all of our windows, we have no fresh air in that room at all. So technically that room's not supposed to be used, because there's no circulation of airflow of any sort. So, I mean, that's why if the central area units, you know, like in here, there's no open windows, but you have airflow, you know, so law, you can have that, you have to have circulating air. We don't have it. I mean, so as of right now, it's, I mean, right now the room's 85 degrees right now. So, but the thing is though, is it's not like this was just put to you, you know, the air conditioning unit, because it, I mean, there was a letter when Mike Bowman was a trustee three, four years ago, that had listed that the air conditioning units were on their way out. And then they, you know, needed to either be updated then, or whatever. And then last year, not yet, this year, the year before Comfort Master came, and they serviced them and did the same thing. They said, look, they're on their last leg. The village board, the trustees, whoever was on at that time, they were, you know, told also. And I know it's different members, even members that were in the fire department, I know that. And we hounded them also. You know, I don't know, you know, bad luck that it crapped out on you guys completely. I mean. Luckily enough, Comfort Master came every morning and serviced it for us and got us up and running during the academy. I mean, but that's the only problem, like I said, we're going to have, is that, you know, 55 kids in that back room for eight hours a day, or however many is, you know.
And the boiler is working. So I feel like we could get it. Here's my, the bottom line of that. I mean, you're right. I mean, could we maybe, I don't know, we could look, but our fiscal responsibility over the course of all these decades, of all the members, should not be a punishment because we, you know what I mean? I feel like because we have this, because we are fiscally responsible and doing the right thing with all the money, so we don't have to charge and float bonds for trucks, is now you turn it around and almost kind of throw it in our faces if there is money that we should be spending that is not allocated for that.
What I'm saying is you guys have money, we don't.
And that's why.
So you're asking us when we don't have it.
We have the money to use to pay for the trucks. What we don't do is go out and pay loans, and we don't go out and float bonds because we don't want to burden the taxpayers with that. And that's what the company, before me, I mean, I've only been the president for two years, but I've been a member for 18. And I've watched all these guys do bare minimum, while there's $800,000, $700,000 budgets right around us, and they do it on 147, is that what we do it on? They're doing it on pennies. And then because they save it, now it's like, it'll be that, oh, look, these guys should have been, they could do it themselves, and then we don't have to come for you for anything. I just felt like it was almost more of a.
It's not a punishment. What we're saying is the money's not available right now.
And I understand.
And it is, and you have some, and if it's a big enough emergency.
You would like for us to do it.
Because we cannot. So, and also to spend the money on the temporary thing would be throwing good money at something that's not necessary. You could get a lot of that work done.
Well, again, the good news is, the company is extremely fiscally responsible, so you don't have to worry about our money. Because we've actually been doing the right thing with it for 120 years. Because again, we're not going to ask for any more money for those trucks. Like you know how, you're in the district, they fault that bomb, and next thing we're paying for a million dollar truck. And they go up to, I mean, a million dollars if, you know, the ladder truck thing was big. So we're not even there yet if we wanted one. And we wouldn't have to come down and ask you for more money. So when you look at the funds, and I'm sure it was nice to be like, oh, they have $150,000, but the money's not there. It is there, but it isn't.
Well, you see, this, I think it would have been a better relationship if you just gave us some of the actuals that we wanted, and we didn't have to go looking for them. I think that if we could find them.
The actuals were the expenses for the year though. Like everyone was like, well, what do you guys spend for that year? It wasn't necessarily what we had in the account either, oh, I don't think, right?
When you said before, well, you know, we thought you guys had the 990, so why are you asking us for money? Now you're telling us it's exactly two different things. We know it's on the 990s, we can look that up, that's easy. What we don't know is the money you ask for every year, where you spend.
Well, I told you several times all the way back in August, that would give you the expenses for the money that you give us for the Fire Matic. You know the rest. You know the $34,000 you receive is what you give us for Fire Matic. You know how much heat, oil, electric, right? So we'd give you the $34,000. You wanted, also based on the contract from Northam, right? Or Phillips Town, sorry.
So for example, in your budget, I believe you have $15,000 identified for repairs each year.
It's not repairs of the buildings, for refurbishing, if we ever get a new building, that's what that's for.
So here's the question, can you take the money out of the repairs, out of your repair line, to rent the air conditioners that you need?
Right, I guess, I'd have to go back. Again, I don't make those decisions.
That is a question to you.
Decisions that, again, this is why we have the money, is because we're able to do this.
And secondly, secondarily, $15,000 is in your budget for repairs. We would like to see an accounting of where that money goes to in expenses per year. You are funded for the $15,000, as you are funded for all the other $134,000 or whatever it is that you ask from the municipalities, we would like to see where that money goes, just as monthly, the village.
Right. The answer that they're going to want to know is why. After all this time, why you need to comb through and these, you know, you don't even stop in to see. You could join, and then you would know. I mean, I'm just saying you could be an associate, I know that sounds crazy, but.
Sorry, I'm at the firehouse a couple of times a month at least. We've been asking for the actuals since 2015, and each year, the answer that we've been given is why, we've never had to do this before.
We never did.
But why, why can't you give it to us? What's wrong?
No, actually, we probably could, if the department or the company wanted to, you just would have to.
Why would they not?
Well, the thing is, I think it would help us.
Why, you can't give us an answer.
You're asking us, you're asking us to give it to you. And you give us whatever it pays for the heat and the oil, and for the oil and the lights and all that, plus $34,000. But there's like, I don't know how much that comes to, but then there's another $34 that we get, there's still $120,000 or $110,000. Why do you have to know about that? That's what we want.
The taxpayers of Nelsonville, Phillips Town, and Cold Spring are giving you that money. They have a right to know where you're spending it.
Correct. You don't represent. So when you want to know where your $34,000.
If you people want to know how much we're spending, we'll tell you how much it's going to cost us to run the fire company. We'll give you that price, and you can get it, and you get it from Nelsonville and Phillips Town, then you'll know how much we're spending.
Sir, we know how much you ask for. We don't, I mean, the same way.
Well, it's going to be whatever our budget is.
An itemized bill, we do an itemized budget every month to see, so that taxpayers know.
Right. And when the taxpayer of Phillips Town comes out and wants to know where their money is, we'll tell them.
What we do seem to all forget is that the Cold Spring Fire Company belongs to the village of Cold Spring.
You're right. You're 100% right, but trucks don't, the members don't. We didn't, I never signed anything for the village of Cold Spring when I joined the fire company.
And we're not sending you any money for the trucks.
I know, I know.
Right, right. That's what, that's.
I just think if somebody asks me something, people are funding me, then I would let, I would tell them, I would straight up give them what they wanted. I honestly would. It was like, here, this is how, and I think it better, lets us better understand where you're spending your money or whatever. It's almost like by not giving it to us, like, it's like hiding something to me. I mean, that's the perception.
Right. And we understand, I understand that as well.
I mean, I don't care. If you have $15,000 that is for repairs, and that's for something else or whatever, well, we don't know that. And if you would explain that, maybe we'd understand it. Just like how you just explained the fire trucks and how you do that. So we don't know all that information, but that information we're not getting. So, but it comes down to like, there's two, well, excluding the actuals and getting that information or whatever, I think that for a better relationship, you know, you should give it to us. If you don't want to, I'm not going to go to court and demand it or anything. I think it would be good if we had that information to how you spent your money, so we know what our taxpayer, what the taxpayers are paying for. As far as the way it's broken down, you have $100,000 that's separate from the account that's for your fire trucks. Right? And what is that for? What's the $100,000 for?
That's the checking account, and that just tells you what's, you know.
But what's it for? It's there every year, and it increases every year.
And it goes, and we take it out and put it in the checking account at the end of the year. Not all of it, but we pay it now.
At the end of the year, you have a $100,000 balance on that.
The whole thing is, at the end of the year, the last three months, we get three checks, we get two checks. One from you and one from Nelsonville. So that adds up to the final thing at the end of the year. And that goes into the general fund, just like your money, whenever you get something goes in your general fund, right?
Right, but at the end, but your 990 shows that your expense, what your expenses are, what your revenues are, and it shows all of that. And it shows $100,000. It doesn't say that the $100,000 is going to be used up at the end of the year, that's where you have extra. That's what it looks like to me.
Well, the audit that's being done currently, or? Well, the audit's also being done, I think.
So the $100,000 at the end of the year, that they're showing on the forms, that's the $100,000 you work with all year, is that what you're saying? And so your expenditures come out of that money? And not all the money that we're providing through, you know, from Nelsonville, Cold Spring, and Phillips Town?
The $100, you know, we take, like I said, there's times when we take money out and put it in the savings, and they move it back and forth, just like you people do.
Isn't it true, if I understand how the fire company is running, and by the way, I think you, the fire company, the Cold Spring Fire Company, has historically run a fiscally responsible organization. You are able to obtain equipment, to the best of my knowledge, I don't know that you're ever buying new. You buy used, and you buy quality with the much, so you do, in my opinion, you do a very fiscally responsible job of purchasing and maintaining your.
The one thing we never practice in emergency program.
That was my understanding. You do a great job at that. And I don't think that your decisions have ever affected your ability to respond to an emergency. So congratulations on that. I'm going to come at this from a different point of view now. You're able to increase your truck fund annually because your income exceeds your expenses. Your income primarily comes from, I believe, three municipalities that provide you with money. Your annual appeal, there is rent you receive from use of your facilities.
It would really be a good, if anything.
But if I think about this in abstract equation, the money that comes in, after you, after you pay for your expenses, whatever's left over goes into your truck balance. So essentially, municipalities are indirectly funding your truck balance over time. That's, that's the way I think of it in terms of a mathematical equation. This money comes in, a smaller amount is required to run the business, the fire company's business, annually, and whatever's left over at the end of the year goes into your truck balance.
I guess, I mean, I don't know what he said, I don't know the numbers, but all I know is each year, so far that I've seen it, being as chiefs in both positions, you know, one year it's, you know, my numbers are right on, and then the following year, less of next year, like next year I need $40,000 for all new bailout kits for everybody. And that's not a regular annual thing, you know, and that's why I said, every year there's something different that, you know, possibly changes on top of us. And that's where like, sometimes like that end of the year budget might only be a couple thousand, I go, yeah, whatever. You know, so that's why I say I don't get, you know, I don't know the numbers, whatever, I just know where I'm, when I come in, I say, I need to purchase this, and they tell me, okay, we'll see what we can figure out, whatever.
So you make a very good point, that your equipment expenditures, it may not be.
They're never the same, right.
It may not be annual, but there are, and I know a year and a half, two years ago, Fred and I and you met with Net Prentice to potentially explore a grant of.
Of the AED.
Yes. And you were up against your current.
Right, because we have ours, right now ours, that's when I was looking into ours, was whether it was smarter for us to purchase or to lease them. You know, but then our problem was, we had, they weren't all the same years, so it was hard to get out of the difference in payments and what we had on them. And then with you guys, you guys had them given to you, or somehow through the ambulance corps, the original one, or something, I don't remember. So to make it all work, I don't remember what the outcome was.
So you just identified two pieces, categories of equipment, that the fire company needs to purchase on a recurring basis, that we were somewhat unaware of. And it's awareness of that that makes us more sensitive to your budgetary needs. So anything that you can do to make us familiar with what your annual expenditures are, not that they're flat, as you're pointing out, because I forget what you called them, so.
Bailout bags, probably AEDs.
The big ticket item.
$40,000?
Yes.
For the bailout bag.
Right, right. That, I don't know how frequently that occurs, but, and then there's probably more of that.
Well, yeah, I mean, everybody's gear, everybody's gear, 10 years, 30, etc. every year.
And I think that those are really very important elements, that if we were aware of them, would make us more sensitive to how you manage your money and where your money goes. So I'm just suggesting, the more information you can provide to us, the more sensitive we can be to your needs.
And I think that's a valid point. And here's, part of the problem that we've had also, is prior boards usually had fire members or fire company members on there. So they were a little bit more understanding of how it worked, and also why there was less questions. They already knew how the bailout might be more, and we might be in the red one year. So it comes out of, again, the general fund, or comes out of the $100,000, or, you know, so this way, it was less, I guess, miscommunication also, because the members were up top and they understood. So I understand you wanting to know that, but again, that's tough to change, because like I told you once before, it's, the board, maybe not this time, but has a tendency here to change frequently. And you're here now, and then be like a bunch of flyby nights, and then the next year it's somebody else, and then now we're redoing it. And that's why when you don't give us a reason, you just want to know to micromanage the fire company, that for 125 years, has been fiscally responsible, as you said, and I said before that, now it's like, okay, I want to know what's going on. And we never had that because there was someone sitting there that was a member. You know, and that was why I thought it was just easier for them to always, so we never had anyone go, well, what are you doing it for? The member already knew, the trustee already knew. You know, whether it was the mayor, or whatever. And I'm sure you guys will be here for another 20 years.
I hope not. God, no.
Yeah. But at the end of the, you know, the end of the day, you know, God willing, all of us usually are still up there for 40 years, or 18, or 25. So you're, you're, you're asking for stuff, and I, I do get it, and it did fall almost on all of you this year, and also on me, and him, and, you know, the board that we had. It wasn't like, three years ago, they were down there asking for stuff, and maybe they should have been. Maybe we could have dumped the roof forty years ago, and then we did, and they didn't, and I don't know why, but this is the stuff that I need to get done now for my members, and moving forward, and God willing, I'll be there for forty years, and.
We're doing a lot of it. I mean, we've, we've done the painting, you wanted that done, I did the.
Right, we got a lot of stuff to do, yeah.
We're trying to get the roof done, I mean, we're doing stuff to, to try and help the fire company out.
But I don't think that's the, the misconception of the fire, I don't think we feel like we, you guys haven't been receptive. I mean, I, we haven't been down here at meetings in the past, how many times, I mean, we've been here quite a bit, and the company prior to this has never come down, but it almost again, but almost because again, we didn't need to. Because there is a member, like I said, whether you join as an associate or as a, or as an active member, there's somebody there that knows the inner workings, and there's less confusion. I mean, if we're reluctant to just come on out and be like, oh, here's everything, it's because it's a lot more work for us too, because beyond, because we are volunteers.
But isn't here everything meaning we spent fifty thousand on this, thirty thousand on this, and, and you have to do all of that in order to come up with your budget, and in order to, you know, to do the 990 forms or whatever, you have to have that information, so, yeah, I mean, why? I don't know, I, if I knew that you're, I'm not saying you're not spending, what you're spending it on is foolish or anything, I think, and I don't understand why people get angry when we ask for that, like we're invading some privacy, we're, we're, we're funding you guys, we just wanna know where the money's going, is that the, is that?
And that's, and we told you we would let you know where the third, and I keep telling you.
Yeah, but you're, you're.
Do you wanna know where thirty-four thousand is, or your money for the FireMatic purchases?
But you forget, Nelsonville, Phillips Town are basically paying us to fund you, so it's not just the thirty-four thousand, but.
But I don't hear anything from the two other municipalities about us complaining about it.
You know, it's all well and good, you gotta remember, we got a lot of guys up there with thirty-four years. You know, and we're the ones going out at two o'clock in the morning, we're the ones going, you know, going all over the place, and then all of a sudden, you know, they come up to us and tell us, you gotta, you gotta give us this, you gotta give us that, or. You know, for guys who's been around a long time, you know, and never have been asked before, it's, they start wondering why.
So why don't we start with baby steps? If you have major purchases of equipment that have occurred in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, why don't you just send us an email? We purchased this in two thousand sixteen, we purchased that in two thousand seventeen, that certainly is, is a start.
And also, let me just add to that, you know that you're gonna need to replace your fire trucks two years down the line, so if you could add that to, you know, we're estimating we're gonna spend between six hundred thousand and whatever.
But you don't have to worry about that, though.
No, I know we don't.
You know what I mean, like that's, that's part of the benefit, and if you wanna micromanage a firehouse, you could come up and do it.
We are not micromanaging, what part of it is micromanaging?
We don't wanna micromanage, trust me, there's no problems.
This is a business arrangement we have, and we're asking for something, and frankly, I don't care if you send it to me, I don't really care. Personally, I don't care if you send it, or else I would have made, I would have given you nothing, I would have said, you give us this, or we're not gonna give you that. You know, the roof's ours, we'll fix the roof. I don't think it's a lot to ask, it's a business arrangement, I'm not insulting you or, or. I wanna know where, where the money's going, is that, and I'm sure it's going in the right place, if it's not going, then I wouldn't give it to us either. If it's, if it's working, so, let's get back to the other things, I don't real, I, I didn't come here really to discuss that tonight, I really didn't. I wanted to discuss where we are, how our budget and everything works, and why we can't, because I don't want you to feel that we're singling you out, that we're after you, or that, and that's why we're not giving you the money. I can't find that money right now, because it's early in the year, and somebody will say four thousand dollars, you can't find that, come on. That's what, you know, people will say, you know, and.
Absolutely, but I could go up and probably be like, they don't have the money, because you've come to us and have told me you don't have the money, I'll take your word for it. I'm not gonna go through your books and look for fifteen thousand and wonder why you can't spend that fifteen thousand.
Our books are right there, and you can see every little bit of it is attached, ready, foiled.
That's not my job to go through those books, that's what I mean, like, that's why I don't, it's not my concern, I mean, you can spend whatever you want on trees. I think the firehouse is important to me, and when there's no money, I get that, and that's all the point, maybe that's not the case for everybody, but you don't seem like you're not giving us.
It's totally important to me, too.
Right, I'm just, I'm an advocate for the firehouse, you have to, if there's no money, right, I'm just doing what I have to do for a group of people that are gonna, I'm gonna answer to as soon as I walk back up there anyway. And I'll be okay with it, I told them I'll do whatever they want, because that's what I'm gonna do for them. They're good people, and they, they try to do the right thing, if they wanna give you the numbers, I have no problem with it. If they don't wanna give you the numbers, like, I have no problem with it, because it's not personal either, just so you know, it's. Yeah, I, I have to answer, and then you could come back and we'll try to figure something out, or we, right, I don't know what to tell you. I'm not gonna make a unilateral decision.
Right.
For fifty guys up there that were been there three times as long as I have, because I think, I may think also, you should know, maybe not, I, I know.
I understand that totally, and I understand you should be here advocating for the fire company, and that's, and that's, that's what you're.
Pretty much what I do every week, or every meeting.
Exactly, and you just have to know that it's not, that, we appreciate, it's not, it has nothing to do with whether we respect the fire company or not.
No, I, yeah.
I mean, if you think I don't respect the fire company, you're totally wrong, I do, I, I mean, I don't have the money to give right now to that, I just don't. And if that means I disrespect you, then, you know, I'm sorry.
It's not even that, I think maybe the, now that the, like, I emailed all of you, putting this all on, on email also to try to get stuff done, because again, I, I just disheartened if I come down and I see, I'm like, did you get the stuff, and I gave it to them, I didn't get it, I didn't see it, and I were waiting on the the ACs, and if you, sooner you rent them, the cheaper they are, and now I'm like, oh my God, because are we gonna get them? Are we gonna have them for the camp, it's our fifteenth anniversary, we've been running this for the community, and there's a lot more behind it, but again, and then I have to come down now and try to explain all that, it also takes more time, because I just, you know, it's, a lot of times.
I agree totally, and I totally, I, I, when you came last week, I didn't know that information was here, and it got shuffled in papers, I don't know what happened, so I apologize, and I agree that I, I understand your.
Because if you shoot me and say there's absolutely zero money, the books, if this hour we do our budget, I'm gonna have to go, okay, but I'll be back.
I agree.
I'm persistent, if there's one, I'll be back.
You should do that.
Because it's, we are doing the right thing, and I know that, they know that, the audit knows that, the 990 knows that. When the, when you look at the next 990 in two years, and if you purchase a truck, and you go, there's only two hundred thousand now.
I don't know if there's too many Brewster or Mayapex or whatever.
Yeah, so you don't know, I, I mean, that's, that's what I can tell you about that, I mean, I appreciate you at least looking for the money. I don't know what to tell, yeah.
I mean, as Marie said, you know, if we could get an idea of some of your big ticket items, and, you know, what I said is like, you know, you have to buy a truck in two years, and you tell me, well, that's not our money, well, it is originally our money before it became your savings. It came from us in Nelsonville and Phillips Town, originally, before it became your savings, so the taxpayers need to know that in two years you're gonna be buying a huge truck, and that you, and that you have done a phenomenal job, and you don't have to, you don't have to do what we do, or, you know, get a bond, or float a bond to do it, or.
But they, they see their tax bills, they know, I, I, they have to know, if they don't, yeah, some people still probably think we're paid, but. They, most people, I think, hopefully know, I don't know, maybe not.
Most people may not care.
And it makes no difference, us, we're still gonna get up and put out your fires, I gotta be honest with you, it's a weird group up there, there's a.
You'd be surprised how many people go pay, how many people think that the trucks are all by the village, you'd be surprised how many people.
These, these are some of the things that maybe, maybe every once in a while, I know you guys have a webpage or a Facebook page or whatever, it's totally not up to date. Maybe every once in a while, I'll be allowed to post something on our Facebook page, if you give me a word about what you're doing, or whatever, you know.
Well, I mean, we try to post what we can on the Facebook page, and we also have, we have to be careful what we post.
Right.
You know, as far as private, personal.
Oh, no, that, that I understand, yeah.
You know, but the other thing is too, is like, we did have, like, this past year, we had our recruit New York, and we had a great turnout this year, and a lot of people showed up from the village area, whatever, and, but the questions were that, you know, they weren't aware that it was one hundred percent volunteer. You know, because they say, well, we pay a fire tax, and that's, you know, what they're assuming, they're coming up from the city, they say, you know, you know, and that's the questions and answers, we got a lot of that, so.
That's the information we have to get out.
And your point, like, with the windows and no ventilation in there, that's an important point, it's not something that I thought of, it's just as far as just quality of air in there, so, you know, that, I think that shines a different light on that you just want air conditioning in there, honestly, to me it does.
No, because we never really have it on except for the, you know, the couple, whatever, it's usually if it's set, if it's turned on during the summertime, it's probably set. We usually leave it up at like eighty degrees just to keep the, you know, the room.
When did you take the windows out of that room?
We didn't.
Nineteen, eighteen, nineteen ninety-six, nineteen ninety-five, right before the hundreds ended, the village took them out. The village crew did.
Two, four, six.
Why did they do it, Steve? Why did they take the windows out?
They think we needed them, I guess.
Too much heat, I think that's what.
Yeah, a lot of.
Because they really got, you know, gaps, they were all single pane gaps, windows.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So.
Where were they, on Main Street or on?
No, it was.
No, they were on the back, on the back.
On Heffernan's driveway, and then two facing in the backyard, and then we had ten, ten in the back, in the car room.
And there were ones on Church Street, too.
What's that?
There were ones on Church Street.
Oh, there was four on Church Street, you know, they weren't all with those, right? Some were glass block.
Some were glass blocks.
The ones in the firm room and the office.
Probably the Church Street were glass block.
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, they were.
Yeah.
Just for like.
For security.
The two in the TV room and the meeting, and the office, they were glass block.
Just for lighting.
The other ones, I think, were.
They were doors, right, doors.
All right, well, thank you for having us, unless you got anything else to ask?
What happens to the old fire trucks? Do they sell them, or what are you doing?
Actually, they sold them the last, the last five that I know of, they sold.
So that helps offset.
Ones in Argentina right now.
Believe it or not, he found us on Facebook, and he said, it's, it's still as close as written, huh?
He drove it there?
You get like ten grand or something.
Yeah, they think the mortgage asset, eighteen or something like that.
Why are they, why are they still?
Eight hundred thousand, but.
Just 'cause you can't use them in the United States after they have that number of hours on them, or whatever?
It's not even the number of, we don't get that, it's, it literally is now, it's, everything's based on years, like ten years for gear, and twenty-five years for your first two engines and stuff like that, so, it just happens, they just.
That sucks, if you never drive, you know, if you're driving it all the time, yeah, but if you.
Right, I mean, like, that's why, like, you see, like, you see, like, a lot of departments have older engines that are still, they're just, what their newest first two engine has to be.
And if we had more room, we could keep the older one for probably more training purposes, and maybe even parades, but we have no parking.
And not only that, but a lot of it has to insurance.
Yeah, it's gonna be more.
Yeah, 'cause the other thing is, the other thing that we don't, that we never realized up until just a few years ago is that by law, we have to replace our tires, or, we never used to, but ten years, the tires have to be replaced.
Was that like, I saw.
Right, we found out the hard way, we blew one out.
Well, you, you very much are bound by, is it New York State or?
NFA, you know, it's just standards, all.
Yeah.
I know that you go to, I, I see the, the service trucks there on a monthly basis, quarterly basis?
We have to have them fully serviced once a year.
But you, but you, there's, there are.
Oh, they're there, if you do a couple, like, yeah, if something breaks, we have to call and have it.
It, it seems as if you do a very admirable job of keeping the trucks in, in best, the best shape possible, which again goes to the, the kind of job that the fire company does for, for the people that you protect.
Yeah, and like I said, depending, every year, we don't know, you know, it depends, like, I mean, yeah, it's, if we probably had more time to sit down and do that every five year quarterly, or ten year, but, you know, we don't have a secretary or somebody, you know, it's, basically, it's my job to sit there and make sure everybody's, you know, I don't have many hours sitting, you know, and do it, it's when all of a sudden it pops up as a reminder that, you know, I have to spend or do whatever, so, you know.
Steve, would you be there next, this, next Thursday, right? Next Thursday?
Sure.
Seven thirty.
What should I bring, anything?
Pizza.
Beer.
Ah, nah, we're, yeah.
Pizza?
Start by showing up, and then we'll, we'll take it from there, okay, well, baby steps, right? Seven thirty.
Is the roof leak, I know Dave.
Currently, no, it's not, I gotta be honest with you, unless it's the. I'm just gonna say, unless it's along the wall like always, because that's usually where it's gonna come.
We'll, we'll get on there right away.
And then, all right, yeah.
This next Thursday?
Now, the only thing is, I don't know as far as like the roof and stuff, now, how does that go about? I don't, you, there's something ready with the, the siren with MetroCom, I guess?
Sorry, MetroCom?
Yeah, we spoke.
It's gonna be here Thursday or Friday?
Correct.
I talked with Kevin, Kevin, I can't remember his last name, he's very familiar, he was unaware, he said, he said he was unaware of the problem, he'll be up at the town call, sorry, at the siren, either Thursday or Friday. What he told me is if it's, if it's a simple fix, he will make it, if it's more complicated, he will send us an estimate. And, and he'll let me know.
Oh, you were gonna, you were gonna explain why we need the siren.
Yeah, the siren does, it's, obviously, it's, primary purpose is to identify and notify us that there is a call. I know we have, I have pager on me here that we sometimes use, these can go down, or they've broken, or not everybody has one, or sometimes there's actually like dead spots. The other form of notification is the use of our cell phones, which probably most of us have on us most of the time.
But we don't.
But not all the text messages come through the same. Sometimes the text messages, text messages don't come through, it's through the cat system that they use, and also a lot of times you'll have a delay. There'll be a delay in, sometimes one of the other, your pager trips, you're like, oh wow, and then you're waiting for the text, or, like you said, it doesn't come through. So nothing's foolproof.
The alarm goes to the fire station first, and then, and then to the siren, or, like, how do you get called that?
Carmel has it.
Phone the nine-one-one, it's Carmel, goes to Carmel, and Carmel hits the tone.
And they trip the, the siren, the siren trip, you'll hear, yeah, it gets tripped, and then it's like.
So it's not a alarm at the station, a bang comes off, or something like that?
No, it's, again, it's a fire department, so we have a backup for a backup for a backup, is what it is.
And mainly, this time of year is when a lot of the guys basically, you know, they rely on it due to the fact of either being out cutting lawns, or swimming pool, or doing whatever, they don't have that stuff on them.
You're walking down Main Street, and you hear the siren go off, and it's not twelve and six, or eleven and five.
It depends on.
We want the conversation with the.
It's a fire, and you're like, most of us will turn, pack around, and pack up.
No, the only other thing I mentioned was Metro, I don't know if, either roof price, or wherever, how they wanna go about, because the tower on the roof can't come down.
Oh, you do want it down?
Huh?
Okay.
Cannot.
No, cannot come down.
I thought you said can.
No, that's what I'm saying, so it has to be while the, you know.
That'll be the specs.
That's what I'm just saying, so that way, just in case it's not, you know.
All right, well, if we're gonna identify anything up there, we don't need like the units or the air conditioner, we're gonna get a price.
They don't work.
From them to, you know, what would take for them to get them down.
We'll hold the dumpster underneath.
I don't, can you hear me over the humming of yours?
Also, for the specs, you guys, they can't block the front doors at all, or what, what, what can, where can they put dumpsters, or whatever, or if they're using a dump truck?
Well, we don't need to give us a parking spot.
Yeah, they would either have either side of the building, either side of the door, if that, if the side door has to be blocked, we can arrange it to the small truck, or whatever, can be turned around or put out, out front, that's not, you know, but that's, you know, the spacing works, they can, you know, of course, the trucks on the building, they're gonna have to.
So the only thing on that roof that, that needs to stay is the antennas, is there, is there anything else up there having to do with the?
They're up there now, actually, on the roof, maybe we'll climb up.
No, there's nothing.
Training, they're doing ladders, stuff.
Yeah, there's nothing else up there.
I didn't think I saw anything other than the AC units, which I had to know.
Just the two units and the, the tower, you know, with the four anchor points or whatever that were up there.
Does that tower sit on curb, right, or some kind?
Uh, yeah, that one's mounted, I believe, down through to the ridge, on the beam, and then the other ones are pitch pockets, all where it's bolted down, so.
All right.
All right, everybody, thank you.
Thank you very much.
See you Thursday, Steve.
I'll be there. Twenty ninth, I'm not going out of town again.
Anything from our faithful audience? Yes, Frank?
Could I ask a question, of course, kind of pulling this back and forth, and I really don't understand.
Is this on Fire Company?
Yeah, with the Fire Company, I don't really understand what the Fire Company is and what the Village Board is. There seems to be some interpretation that the Village Board owns or controls the Fire Company, but everything I have gives me evidence that the Fire Company is somewhat independent, has their own management, has their own board directors. So if that's not true, then you should be the board of directors of the Fire Company, you shouldn't be asking any of these questions, you should already have this information as a function of your function as a board directors of the Fire Company. Is that not true?
No, it is, they have their own president, and secretary, and their own accountant.
President is an independent organization, it's not the same as.
Consider them to be a function of the village.
Based on?
Municipal law.
And yet they have their own president.
They have a president, they have a board of directors within the Fire Company, however, they are, consider them to be a function of the village of Cold Spring.
I understand they're probably authorized.
And that is due to municipal law, they are not a fire district. If they were a fire district, it would be different, they are not a fire district.
So this is a fire company, not a district.
They are not a fire district.
Quite a bit of time here asking for information back and forth, and it seems that it's pretty much two different entities, otherwise you would automatically know what the other entity was asking for, what entity have, so, I seriously question, maybe in some legal fact, that's the way it should be, but in reality, it seems to be very different.
Okay.
You don't have the information that you repeatedly ask for, and they don't have the feedback or the cooperation of the funds, at least in part, maybe one thing's going on, is their, Village Board seems to own the property, and the Fire Company seems to utilize the property. And you guys, the Village Board doesn't meet up there in their.
Property is owned, the property is owned by the Village of Cold Spring, the structure is owned by the Village of Cold Spring.
Building, and that, and that.
And basically, the Fire Company belongs to the Village of Cold Spring, but they run their own entity, you know, they have their own budget, they keep their own books, they run their own.
Now, when you say belongs to the Village of Cold Spring, does that mean that you?
It's the Village of Cold Springs Fire Company.
They're a function of the Village of Cold Spring.
But in contradiction to, let's say, the sewer district and the water district.
Well, they're volunteers, they're not paying.
By the Village of Cold Spring. With unpaid volunteer authorization, their board directors are unpaid, in contradistinction to the law district and the sewer district, which is your function. You actually act as the board director, so you're water district and the sewer district.
But we're not, you know, I assume that if we were, if we were all professional firefighters, we would be able to give more input to them, but we don't know anything about it. I'm not even a volunteer, no one on this board is, so, you need it, they need their own board, their own brain to understand what they need to do, and then they.
Not expected to be a sewer expert or a water district expert, you hired a professional water district.
Right, and they're paid, and these guys are volunteers.
So what's your question?
Well.
Fire companies are basically controlled by this, by state law, by, I believe it's New York State, has their own laws controlling what Fire Company should do, is they set how often they have to change their tires, when they go off for calls, and so, there's all kinds of rules.
But the, but the organization of a fire company is dictated by state law, in New York State, the organization of a fire company and its relationship with the municipality is dictated by state law.
There's no doubt to that, it's just the consequence of how that's managed, or not managed, results in this. There's no doubt to that, it's just the consequence of how that's managed or not managed results in this back and forth of requests for information. And from my perspective, I'm just wondering, do we have a viable fire company?
Yes, we do, yeah, I don't think there's anyone here who would say differently.
Yeah, I think we have.
Well.
They manage, they manage the company, they manage the company something we haven't done. They've been existence as long as the village has been existence, they have not been asked for edits information in the past. They sent, they, they, they bring their budget to us, they have budget requests and we get a budget request that we pass on to Philipstown and to Nelsonville.